The Rattone Town Hall. My name is Laura Brewer and I am Secretary right now of the Rattone Ambassadors. And we are one of the sponsors of this, this meeting, basically. And we have other sponsors as well. And we're going to do just speakers. So I'm going to introduce a speaker. They will talk about their organization or like for instance Scott will talk about what's going on in the city, some of the challenges that they've, they have, some of them that they've met, some of the good things that are going on. And we will also have our Chief Garcia here. He will address a few questions. We did have an opportunity for you to write out questions and turn them into the city. Uh, so our speakers will address those questions either in their text or they will, um, mention the question itself and then answer it. Uh, I do want to introduce the other sponsors of this besides the, um, city of Rattone. Thank you very much Scott and our City Commission for, uh, being co-sponsors of this event. We also have, um, Rattone Main Street. Do we have a table on Rattone Main Street right now?
Yeah, we're right here.
Okay, let's give them, let's give them a hand. They helped co-sponsor. Okay, and then, uh, the Senate Center for Community Innovation. Do we have them here? There, there you go. Thank you for co-sponsoring this event. Uh, we also have Rain. So thank you everyone for helping to sponsor. We have the Rattone Crime Stoppers. Say hi. We have Grow Rattone. Thank you. And then we have other, um, other people here with their organizations. Uh, so as after we have some time to talk and have our speakers up, you're welcome to go to their tables, ask them questions about their particular community, uh, organization. We will ask each of their tables to come up and just say a few words. I'm going to be the timekeeper, so we only have some, you know, three to five minutes for everybody to kind of squeeze it all in because we do have a lot of people who would like to, um, address the group here about their organization. So, um, since I'm up here first, I'm going to talk about the Rattone Ambassadors. Basically, we are the Good Feeling Group. We, um, like to promote our businesses in Rattone. We'd like to promote Rattone. We'd like to welcome new visitors. Now, because of COVID, we were not able to meet a lot of our new people who have moved into Rattone in the last few years. And so what we do. Uh, what the ambassadors do is give newcomers to town a, a welcome bag. And it has discount coupons in it for many of our, uh, city businesses. It has information, um, about the city. It has information about local, uh, recreational places that you can visit like Lake Malloyo or the NRA Whittington Center. So these are for newcomers to town. If you are new, uh, in the last, say, three years because of COVID, please come up and, um, help yourself to a bag. We'll ask you to give your name and phone number, where you live, so that we can properly welcome you because a lot of times we will invite you to our luncheon and, uh, treat you to a meal. So anybody who's new to Rattone in the last few years, please come up after, after our event and, um, sign up. Okay, so I, with that, I am going to now introduce everybody at the tables. Uh, we'll not have you speak right, well, actually I did, but not everybody. So that table down there, would you stand up and say who you're with, please?
Hi, everyone. We are Youth Heartline and our main office is out of Talls, New Mexico. I am here with Valerie Alaretti, Misty Gomez, Jada Cordero, and I'm Danielle Bannacole. Uh, we specialize in court-appointed special advocates, uh, Acosta in the court system to advocate in best interest of children. We also specialize in supervised, safe exchange supervised visitation program, which offers non-pastoral parents the opportunity to visit with their children in a safe environment. We also have street outreach and a family navigator, Misty Gomez, to help families succeed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Danielle. And so after you're ready, if you have some information, please visit their table. Okay, Crossroads.
Hello, my name's Alia. So I'm a crossroader, state of health and recovery services. Uh, we specialize in substance abuse and mental health. Uh, this is our team. One of our commanders, Valerie, is a designated medical care. We also, uh, we work all rounds of substance abuse and mental health. We also work in legal law. We have court agents that work closely with justice probation parole. Uh, all agencies I got to do with a lot and, um, we work with almost every agency that there is to work in San Francisco. We have the Northeast Region, we're top director of this region, so we oversee from Las Vegas to Wigan. We also got offices which are central region companies out there.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Ashley and I'm here with, uh, Colfax County Youth and Parental Services. We service Colfax and Uden County and then along with other grant, we do the Health Council in Colfax County.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Beverly Baca. I'm the president of the BMW Auxiliary. This is Amanda Segura. She's our, uh, treasurer and because Wadaka is treasurer, secretary, I'm not. But what we're, we're here for is collection for flags. We're going to have a flag burning ceremony, flag retirement ceremony on Flag Day. And we do have several drop-offs in town and we could take either to the Alps or to the BMW also, the drop-off your patterned flags and will dispose of them properly. And also we have applications here for anybody that is interested in joining the auxiliary. Okay, thank you.
My name is Randy Bees. I'm the president of Grow Rattone and I'm here with our director, David Winley. Uh, Grow Rattone is a certified economic development organization by the state of New Mexico. We help, uh, we help support businesses in the community through technical assistance, entrepreneurial workshops, networking events. We also promote, uh, works out on the end, Colfax County through, uh, by, uh, working with site selectors who are looking to relocate, um, new factory or other types of companies to our area. Okay, thank you.
I'm Jessica Penalarrio. This is my coworker, John Loth. Um, we are with the Colfax County DWI Program. We are, uh, the program within the county that services probation for DWI offenders at almost all stages except for felony. Um, he's also going to be entering the schools as of next year as the French Specialist K-12 two. Uh, get the information out there about, uh, drug and alcohol related issues in the community. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, and since they're real close here, we're going to have Lynette come up for Crime Stoppers.
An introduction, okay. I like to have a microphone. Um, hi, I'm, uh, Lynette Simpson. I'm one of the directors on Rattone Crime Stoppers. Um, our other directors, Bill Allen, Anita Moffett, and Kelly Fissell. Paul Brewer is our president. And, um, we are Rattone Crime Stoppers. We take anonymous tips through our hotline, through our website, and then we pass those along to the law enforcement agencies of Rattone and then they do their investigation.
Okay, and then I already kind of did the Rattone Ambassador. So just a, a quick introduction and then we are going to have any of you who want to speak later, which I know there are a few, uh, that have some questions and things, but just a quick introduction.
Welcome. I'm just the new superintendent of the Rattone Public Schools and this is Jolene Star. She's our federal programs director and we do service all our students here in the community of pre-K, young women, and twelve grades. And we'd love to share more with you about our schools and the programs and the things that we offer. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Betty Bowers and with me is Carol Baca. We represent retired public employees of New Mexico and our mission or our goal is to protect and provide the benefits that are placed in the parent and our health program also. We do have a very active local chapter. We encourage you to join if you are a public employee of New Mexico and we have some information for you. So thank you.
Okay, Paul, you're at the counter. Just a quick introduction. Cause you're going to have a moment to speak after.
Green is the acronym for the Regional Agency Intervention Department. We specialize in dealing with substance abuse, behavior for health issues by addressing other non-icomicities.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Paul Taylor. So with that, I am going to introduce our first speaker and then he also has someone he would like to introduce this evening. So let's give it up for our city manager, Scott Berry.
Well, it's nice to see so many people out there. Thanks for, uh, taking the time to come tonight and to see so many people up here. These represent community partners and in the rural community, these partnerships are especially, uh, important. That's how we get things done is not, uh, a hundred percent the city doing things or the county doing things, but the strength of these partnerships, uh, that you see here. Uh, I also want to thank, uh, Laura for putting this, uh, together tonight and for, uh, uh, taking the time and the interest to, to do this. Laura Brewer has been very active, uh, in community, uh, type of meetings over the years. And one of the toughest challenges that we find really is the communications. Uh, how do we get the word out to the public, uh, on what's going on in town? And, and likewise, how do you get, uh, your thoughts to us here in, in, uh, local government, whether it's, uh, the city, schools, the county, uh, any, any form of local government? So this is a great event. Thanks Laura for doing that. Laura has asked me to give you a brief report on, uh, where we're at in the city of Rattone and I'm, uh, going to try to do that. Uh, I have been the city manager now for going on nine years and it's really, uh, I see, uh, a world of difference from 2014 to, uh, 2023. And I'm going to use, uh, kind of one example and then kind of go over the highlights of what the city is working on. Uh, but, uh, when I came to the city of Rattone, the city was, uh, very challenged with, uh, its budget. We had, uh, furloughs, uh, in place for some period of time. Uh, not much of a budget to do anything more than basic services. And now what you see really is, uh, the, the city of, of Rattone expanding on its services to the public. We'll talk about some of those real briefly. And, and just to kind of put that in the context, I, just a note here, the, the city manager before me had actually proposed selling part of the city's watershed, uh, to fund some city operations. We ultimately did not do that. Uh, the budget has improved over the years as to, uh, you know, the conservative work of our elected officials and you see, uh, city commissioners here, uh, throughout the, the, the meeting room there. So I think they've done a, a great job of, uh, working on that. That's a slow process, but, uh, the city is much healthier. We're not, we didn't sell the watershed, we're not going to do that. We're actually, uh, adding space to that, as you might have heard. Um, in, in 2014, when I started, uh, and infrastructure improvements is one of the important things that we hear, uh, from people that participate in our planning meetings, uh, in regard to street construction, um, we didn't have a whole lot going. So when I started, uh, we had trouble coming up with the matching funds. Uh, we had trouble, we had no grants in hand. And the first year, I think we, we did a couple hundred thousand dollars of street improvements and our goal was to do a half a million dollars a year of street improvements. Uh, we set that as a goal and, and, and to repeat that every year to try to improve the streets. Most of you probably live on a street that you would like to see some improvements made to, uh, right now, but, uh, we didn't get there. We did half a million dollars worth of street improvements. Last year, uh, the city did 1.5 million dollars worth of street improvements and that was a big year for us. So that put some stress on contractors, uh, engineers, uh, inspectors and city staff as well. This year, uh, we're at the beginning of construction season. Uh, we will do about 3.9 million dollars worth of street improvements in Rattone. Uh, and so that's a combination of things, but the, uh, I, I think it's effectiveness of, of the staff that, that, uh, I work with and I appreciate them, but also resources that are pushed out there. And so the resources are, are a double-edged sword. There's, there's, there's more to be had out there, but, uh, we really have a, uh, a, uh, 2014 type of staff that's really geared to just basic services. And so keeping up with all the opportunities becomes more challenging. So, uh, that's one thing I tell the city commission, we really need to expand our ability to respond to the resources that are out there. Contractors are also busy, engineers, architects, they're busy, people that you buy materials from, they're, they can't supply those materials and that's where you see this inflation factor that we talk about. So generally while we're doing a lot more, uh, infrastructure across the board, uh, we also see a higher cost with that and some challenges that go with that. So, uh, that's one of the things that we would talk about. Uh, what the city has, has, uh, uh, tried to do currently that, uh, we maybe did not do years ago, uh, economic development for one. The city did pass an increment dedicated to funding economic development. Uh, the city commission will talk about economic development services, uh, on, at their Tuesday meeting as far as the next step, but we've had a little bit of success, uh, with economic development. I think we're at the beginning of what could be a successful period. And those of you that have been around for Rattone for a while, you know that, uh, we lost a lot of employment related to coal mining, uh, also freight railroad, uh, the horse racetrack, the tourism industry, and, and none of those businesses are coming back. So we have to figure out other things to do and those employed hundreds of people. And so, uh, it takes time to diversify your local economy. Uh, we're working on that. We're really utilizing all of the tools that we have available. And I will only talk briefly about this, just, uh, a, a couple of things that we have going, but one of the projects that we have going, uh, is a partnership with L. Rattone, uh, Media Works and we do have the, the principals present. Could you raise your hand back there? I'm going to do that. This is a, an innovative, uh, solution to our economic development challenge. Uh, we propose to create a workforce development and film production, uh, facility in Kearney School. Kearney School, for those of you familiar, is about a block away from us, north of us. Uh, it has been vacant for about eight years. And so we, uh, put a lot of attention on this project in 2023. We currently have about four million dollars worth of, of grant funds, uh, to start that project. Uh, and, and I think this could be, uh, very important to Rattone's economy, but, uh, not only does it create jobs, but we're looking at keeping the young talent, uh, in Rattone, train them. Uh, there's a lot of, of trades and, uh, jobs that go along with film production. So it's not just in front of the camera or behind the camera, but there's a lot of high-tech positions that go with it. There's also electricians, carpenters, uh, people in, in, in various trades and jobs and it's good for local business. So that's one of the things that, uh, we're fortunate to be working on. Uh, you also may have heard of our Moss Adventures Partnership. That's a group, uh, that is involved in outdoor recreation. That's one of the things we identified in our strategic economic development plan a few years ago. Uh, and this is different, but this group is relocating from Fort Lauderdale, Florida to Rattone, New Mexico. It's weird just to see things go the other way. As a part of our economic development, uh, uh, strategy, uh, we are finishing the deal to add over 2,000 acres to Sugar Creek Canyon State Park. And it's not just the city. We have some great partners involved in that. Uh, the Nature Conservancy, the Trust for Public Lands, uh, Energy, Minerals and Natural Resources, uh, Game, New Mexico Game and Fish and New Mexico State Parks have all been involved in that. But that will increase the area of, of Sugar Creek Canyon State Park by about 50%. Uh, one thing we talk about when we talk about economic development, people come to town, uh, we see people for the first time, they see Rattone with fresh eyes and they say, "You, you got a little bit of a, uh, 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 bad property issue in Rattone. You got some ugly properties in Rattone. What are you doing about that?" And so Rattone has hired a full-time code enforcement officer. If you've talked to that gentleman, it probably wasn't that pleasant for you, so, but, uh, we've hired a full-time planning and zoning officer. Uh, we have applied for funding through the US Environmental Protection Agency for Brownfield Program. Uh, we've applied for funding through the state and that actually is, uh, working to remediate the, the two buildings in downtown Rattone that you probably recognize as being the, the worst buildings down there. We're, we're, uh, proceeding along with that process, uh, and some other funding. So we are really taking the cleanup, uh, issue seriously as well. And so those are some of the things that we're going. I'll just mention one other infrastructure, uh, project. It's, it's from a question that I had received here. Uh, Rattone is getting ready to start construction of our first photovoltaic. So photovoltaic is a solar array. We're going to construct solar panels, uh, on land that's donated to Rattone from Colfax County. Uh, we're going through some of the, uh, some of the, uh, documentation on that now and I got a question on that. Where, where's that solar project that I heard so much about? Uh, so just to talk about that a little bit and, and this, uh, is typical for, uh, local government, really all levels of government. Uh, but we, we, uh, dedicated some funds to a solar array of photovoltaic. Uh, we looked at about six sites. Uh, some of those sites had an issue with it and we, uh, ultimately talked to the county about donating 10 acres, uh, to this project. Uh, we did, uh, agree on that and in the middle of the project, uh, the county commission changed somewhat. There was an election, uh, some, some staff change in Colfax County too. Uh, so we did some, uh, additional approvals with the new county commission. We have performed an appraisal of the site. We've performed a geotechnical investigation of the site. Uh, we've done a cultural resource survey of the site and currently, uh, we need approval from the State Board of Finance. They're supposed to hear our request, uh, at their main meeting. So those are things that you, you know, it's not construction, you can't see it out there, but, uh, the project's been very active. So for the person that asked a question on the solar array, uh, there is that piece. Uh, I've just been handed a question in regard to the cannons. There were two cannons that, uh, uh, really are 19th century cannons that were in Ripley Park. And we had a problem, a structural problem with the bases that, that supported those cannons. And what we'd like to do, uh, is to replicate the full cannon carriage and put those cannons back out in the park. So for the person that asks about the cannons, uh, uh, nope, we still have them. They're in storage right now. We're trying to, uh, put together a project to restore that and put them back out in the park. So, uh, we have that. Now, uh, I want to take a minute here, uh, and, and I, there's a couple of guests here in Rattone that I'd like to introduce. Uh, and I'm going to ask, uh, Tim Dodge to come forward. Tim is consulting with Sunrise Medical and of course, medical services in a rural town, very challenging. Uh, Tim will talk about that a little bit. And one thing I want to point out with Tim, he's got a, uh, extensive knowledge and experience in local government throughout the state of New Mexico and also in how state government, uh, in New Mexico functions. Uh, Tim has been in this game for a lot longer than me and, uh, he's, he's in town tonight. I was glad that he could come. He's got a guest with him. I'll let him introduce just some brief comments, but, uh, the importance of this is Tim will make some, uh, totally objective, uh, uh, perspective, uh, judgments about where we're going in Rattone, what's, what's, what's good or what's not good. So let me introduce Tim Dodge, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank, thank you Scott. You know, I actually want to, you know, thank Scott because, you know, you know, I've, I've actually been a city manager for 20 years and I'm a recovering city manager. And, and, you know, I say I'm recovering because Scott gave me some of the best advice I ever had when I was a city manager in Las Vegas. Scott had just started up here and Scott said, "Tim, you know, I came over from the private sector and, you know, he gave me these three letters." And he, and so I opened up the first letter and I said, "Tim, when you get in trouble, blame this previous city manager." So the first time I got in trouble, I went up to the mayor's council and said, "It was the previous city manager. It wasn't me." So then I was, okay, I got off the hook on that one. The second time, I opened up the second letter, I said, "Uh, blame, blame the, uh, the, uh, city clerk." Okay, it was the city clerk that did that. It wasn't me. I'll make sure I reprimand her, take care of business, it won't happen again. So then the third time I got in trouble, I opened up the third letter and it said, "Write three letters." That was the best advice he gave me. But you know, I just want to, to attest, you know, I've been the city manager in Santa Rosa, New Mexico, Las Vegas, and as a recent, uh, Rio Doso, New Mexico. And what you see happening here in this community, the activism that, that you see tonight, this, this is a good thing. It's good that everybody's getting together, coming together. You don't see this in other communities. We have a behavioral health individual here and there's a group back here. You know, when you start to talk about scotosis, that's a blind side, right? It's what's right in front of you in your environment that you don't see. What I see and when Scott's talking about giving you, uh, my perspective of what I see here, I see groups like I've seen Paul. I've known Paul since I was in Las Vegas, uh, when the needle started up, right Paul? The economy was failing all over. The downtown was dilapidated. He talked about a couple of buildings. Last time I was here, I think in '09, uh, there was more than just a couple of buildings closing up. Your streets were falling apart. I see that you have beautiful streets skated and you're headed in the right direction. You know, uh, the pandemic and you talk about the challenges of the pandemic and I can't remember, uh, somebody just mentioned it. One of the biggest things is the challenge of communicating. And then you have social media, you got newspapers that have gone away. Those are challenges and it's a big challenge from local government to explain what's happening in the community and engaging it. So, you know, I think you need to focus on some of the creative ideas on how you can re-engage the community and, and educate and inform everybody what's occurring in your community. Because what's happening here is really, uh, transforming your, your community. You may not see it, but when you start to look at other communities and what's happening throughout New Mexico, um, you guys are way ahead of the ball there. Other communities are envious of what's happening here. So I just want to applaud the leadership, um, you know, for what they've done over the years. In addition to that, um, I was, uh, part of a mayor's council to the pandemic. Your mayor, Mayor, uh, Sagata, every week was attending those meetings on behalf of, of Rattone. So I just want to applaud you all and your efforts. Um, you know, with that, that's enough about what I've done. Um, I want to introduce Chuck Brown. He's with Sunrise Clinics. Um, I'm currently consulting with him and there's some recent expansions that have prepared so, Chuck.
I'll just take a second. Uh, some of you know me, some of you don't. I just want to let you know I'm born and raised in Santa Rosa, which used to be thriving until the freeway went by in 1969. We faced many of the same challenges that Rattone does. Uh, I, uh, my brother, Dr. Randy Brown, was born and raised there and returned there for two years briefly. If you're a doctor and you return to a small community, you will never escape alive. So he's been there for 30 years. Uh, we've been working together for about four or five years. Uh, and in that process, we've expanded family health, primary care from Santa Rosa to Tucumcari, then to Las Vegas, and most recently in, in September of 2018, we opened a primary care facility here. Eileen Romero Swope, whom many of you know, uh, was our sole provider here for two or three years. Later we were able to bring Pamela Ammons. Pam, would you just wave real quick? Eileen, you can wave because other people, there you go. The reason I wanted to talk to you just for a second is to tell you, we brought, we brought Pamela all the way from Tennessee and, and she's, she built a home here and she's, she's made a life here. And, uh, with that expansion, we've added more people. We now have six or seven people on staff here. We've got Henrietta Wilchin, who you know, many of you know through the school system here, but, uh, I've, uh, no one in my group knows this, but we're getting ready in the next week or two to announce the addition of a new, uh, primary care practitioner here, new to this community, not someone we stole, but someone new. And I'm excited about that and we'll, you'll, you'll hear announcements about that shortly. Anyway, we believe that part of growing a community, uh, and having a successful community is tied directly to the quality of your primary care services. And, um, and we have people we hire. We'd like to have people come from high school and know that they can grow all the way through the process of, uh, up to and becoming a, a nurse practitioner or something like that by remaining right here in Rattone. And, uh, you know, I know the College of Trinidad has, has a, uh, tuition sharing program here, but we're excited about that and I can just tell you, we're looking at, we're going to be here for a long time. We're looking at adding quality services that improve the life here in Rattone. Uh, I know what it's like to live in a small town and my community stretches from Tucumcari to Santa Rosa to Las Vegas to Rattone. And, and I know this, I know this area. I was born and raised here. We love the people here and we'll be here. Thank you. I will wrap up my comments real quickly. I do have a-
I do have an announcement. For those of you that live on the west side of town, you're aware that we had a wildfire event this afternoon. And I did get off the phone with the fire chief just shortly before I came up here. He said the fire is 100% contained, cooling it down. I want to thank the, all of our partners. We have Colfax County back here. Thank you so much. They put all their resources out there. Vermejo Park, Cimarron, Philmont, they all responded quickly. That was the key to knocking that down. Luckily, we didn't have much wind today. If it had been the previous day, we might have had a problem. Also, all of our law enforcement people that are here tonight, they've spent all afternoon on this fire event, and yet here they are today. So thank you to all the first responders.
Thank you very much, Scott. We appreciate all the comments and the information about what a great job we're doing here in Rattone. Sometimes we just don't hear it, we don't believe it, but it's true. Things have really been improving, and they continue to improve. So I would like now to introduce to you our Chief of Police, Mr. Garcia. Chief Garcia.
Thank you, Laura. First off, hello, everyone. Chief Garcia, thank you to all of our sponsors and partners that are here tonight. Thank you very much. So I'm not going to have any special guests, Scott. Taking the spotlight off yourself. My career spans 23 years here, six of which, six months of which were not here. They were in spring, where I started my career. And the rest of the time's been here in Rattone. Rattone is my hometown. I love this place, and that's why I'm here, doing what I do for you. Received several questions. I'll touch on them briefly, and we'll go from there. Question was, is RPD certified to receive federal grants? Yes, we are, and yes, we've had them before. We've had a cops grant before. We've also had a school resource officer grant before. The problem does not lie in funding. Funding is not the problem, as the city manager said. The budget is in good shape. The problem is finding qualified applicants for this job. Every law enforcement agency in the nation is suffering this problem. So although grants are a good idea if you don't have the people to fill it, not so much. Training for dispatchers and officers for mental illness response. It is mandated by the state. And is in state statute that every brand-new officer receives 40 hours of training in their law enforcement academy, whether it's the basic or the state, and two hours of continuing training every year of their career to follow. So yes, we are adequately trained to deal with mental health crisis, and we do deal with it on a daily basis, whether it's in the county, on the highways, or in the city, we are dealing with it. There was a question as far as Narcan training. That's a hot button issue right now with opioids. So we are trained. New Mexico DOH Harm Reduction Program puts out a class every year. Every law enforcement officer in the state takes it, and the Narcan thinks for us, and not so much the fire department that has to pay for it, is free. Had a question come in about the investigation results for the two burglaries of the pharmacies here in town. The Rattone Police Department has taken the investigation as far as it can. Good thing for us, DEA has reached out to us. They believe it to be a larger problem. They requested the case file. They believe it to be a ring of burglaries that have taken place throughout the state and the surrounding states. So we've been in close contact with DEA. They're still investigating that case, or both of those cases. And once we get some information on that, we'll definitely pass it out via media. Another question. Thank you, Laura. I know this is from you. Reference to Coffee with a Cop. We had it a while back. I know the state police has taken that initiative, and they have one coming up soon, I believe, Major. So you'll be able to talk with the state police at the coffee shop? We are willing to move forward and do that. As I stated, staffing for us is an issue. We're budgeted for 15. I'm currently sitting at nine, so we are stretched thin. Which brings me to my next question of what is Rattone doing to recruit police officers? This question was interesting to me, and I really appreciated it. I'll read it out for you. RPD is spread way too thin to be effective. We cannot expect our officers to protect us with such a small staff. Officers in our community are in danger. I agree with that to a point. We do have nine officers. One is as green as a sprout, and she's, she's making her way, but we'll get her there, so we'll go to the academy probably in July. But we utilize outlets like Indeed, Facebook, New Mexico Aliade to promote the police department. An RPD webpage is in the works, but it's in its infancy, so once we get that in place, we'll be able to promote ourselves a little better. Workfork Solutions is planning multiple county job fair coming up in June, and we will be participating in that. I agree that there is a danger factor in not having a larger department, but what I can tell you is every, every officer in this department, every law enforcement officer in this area is dedicated to the safety and well-being of its citizens. Just a few numbers to throw at you. Rattone dispatch calls for service for the last three years. 2021, 5,781. Now, this is just the Rattone Police Department. This is not including the state or the county. 2022, 5,199, and as of this year, 1,492. To break that down a little further, in '21, we had a staff of eight. Six officers primarily taking all of the calls in the city. What that breaks down to is 80 calls per month, per officer. So when you hear the naysayers say, "Well, Rattone PD doesn't do anything. They're just driving up and down the streets." Well, we're probably driving back and forth from call to call to call. So in 2022, similar numbers. Officers average 72 calls for service each month, and that's per officer. '23, we're off to a fast start again. We're averaging 71 calls per month, per officer. I definitely encourage our community to stand up and be heard. Report crime when you see it. Be a good witness for law enforcement. If you choose to be silent, then valuable information you may have is lost. If you choose to stay silent, at least contact our friends at Crime Stoppers. Make an anonymous tip. At least get that information to the right people so we can do the right thing with it. There were quite a few questions on animal control. That is a definite hot button issue for the city, for the Rattone Police Department and the Animal Control Service. In 2022, we were without an animal control officer. We now have Alan Wilson, who's been great for the program. He's gone through his certification training, part one. He has a part two to go through. We have a team of three workers out at the shelter, two part-time, and then Alan, which is full-time. The shelter's been at capacity for several months. The animal control officer continues to answer calls for service, but patrolling the city and picking up loose dogs is kind of counterproductive when you don't have anywhere to put them. So he, he doesn't patrol very often, but he does answer his calls for service. ACO has encountered dangerous animals, taken the proper steps in order to get them contained, confined, and to get the owners either sighted, or a lot of the times, the owner will surrender the animal, which is a benefit to the community because it's no longer in it. As far, the question also went to, what is the city doing to prevent dangerous animals? I know that the city has a requirement, if you were sighted for a dangerous animal, that you have to register your animal as such. You have to carry insurance for said animal. When people start getting hit in the pocketbook, they more likely give up their animals. So that animal is taken care of. Just a little note for you to know how busy animal control is. In 2021, 351 calls for service were brought in. 2022, 335, and so far this year, 114. Now, you have to remember, in 2022, all 335 of those calls were mostly law enforcement answered due to the lack of animal control. So that is my spiel. I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Continue to support your local law enforcement, your local government, your local entities that help us. We appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. We appreciate all the information that you've given us, and it just is a reminder that we, we do have everybody working towards the same goal, and that's for the safety and the health of our community. So thank you. Now I would like to introduce to you our County Sheriff, Sheriff Leonard Baca.
Good evening, everyone. Again, thank you to our sponsors and everybody who put this together. I appreciate it. Thank you for inviting me. As Chief Garcia said with a lot of his, a lot of his comments, I've got similar questions to our chief. Is Colfax County Sheriff's Department certified to receive federal grants? And the answer is yes. We've had a few grants in the past, but in trying to find the qualified personnel to fill these positions and stuff, we've used all the similar things that he's used from Indeed. We've tried Purple Breedcase, which links nationally to junior colleges. We use our Facebook page. We've done a lot of that nationally, which is, it's hard to get people to come here to do this work anymore. With that, the next question that I had was, is the Colfax County Sheriff fully staffed? We are not. I have one vacancy, which is a court security position. I have two currently in the academy, should be graduating on May 25th. And I have two infiltrating. We are staffed for 15. I have 14. So we are getting there, but a lot of my staffing also comes with court security, transportation of prisoners from states back to Colfax County to be held accountable for crimes and criminality in our community, to go before the judges. With that, we also have the SORON program, which is the tracking and registration of sex offenders throughout the county. We also patrol 4,000 square miles in Colfax County, and also assisting our smaller municipalities that have sometimes one officer or no officer because they can't fill their positions. The next question that I have was, is the Colfax County Sheriff definitely been trained to use Narcan? Yes, we are. As the chief said, we are all required to be trained enough. We do have training annually. We just had an incident in court where we had to use Narcan, which was ineffective with the latest opiate that's, that's hitting our community, which is, they're calling a trank. So that's mixed with the veterinarian incentive, so Narcan's not, it hasn't affected. So hopefully, we get that, that addressed and get that stopped. We've been working with the DEA as well. I guess this is a bigger thing that's moved from the east coast towards us. So they were aware of it. They offered to bring assistance up here to help us with that issue. Also, the other question I had was, what actions are being taken to reduce drug traffic in Colfax County? We've had a few deputies who've made some larger traffic seizures. They're partnering with the DEA with one of the cases that adopted the case. They've got the case file now, so that's at the U.S. Attorney's Office waiting for approval. They're coming up again to assist us in working that further, but they are also stretched thin as well. Those are all the questions I had. Some of the other things that we are moving forward with the sheriff's office. We were asked if we were going to be moving towards accreditation. We are working on an accreditation to New Mexico counties. I've been part of a board with the New Mexico County Sheriff's Association for best governance for sheriff's offices, because we also deal with the transports, the court security, and other aspects. So we are working towards that. Part of that process is updating our policies with all the changes that we get yearly, the target capable, all that, but we've got to get that done in order to meet the accreditation. We're working on that. That's working on that, probably, you're going to be ready. That's all I have. That's my spiel.
Thank you, Sheriff Baca. We appreciate your time. Now I would like to open this up to our sponsors and give them a little bit of time to give everybody a little more information. Earlier, we just kind of introduced, and I do want to mention that everybody here has information at their tables, and we encourage you, after all the speakers are done, please visit the tables, talk to the people there, get the information that you might be curious about, about these organizations. We're all here to benefit Rattone and to help each other. So the next speaker I would like to introduce you to is Lynette, and she is actually with the school. She's, are you still the counselor there? And the media person?
No.
No, okay, okay. So, and she is with Crime Stoppers, and Crime Stoppers and Rattone Ambassadors were basically the first two organizations that wanted to put this together because we felt that there was a real need for communication. We do plan on doing this annually, if not semi-annually, because I think it's very important, as was mentioned before, communication in a small community, you wouldn't think would be a problem, but it is. We're all in the silo effect. So we want to open it up so that everybody can learn about everybody else. So with that, I'm going to have Lynette speak.
So the Rattone Crime Stoppers program grew out of a public concern over reducing the level of crime in our community. The Rattone program now operates as an independent organization. The concept has developed into a combination of efforts by local media, businesses, civic, and social clubs, law enforcement agencies, and the public. The Rattone chapter started in January 2016. Our mission statement is the Rattone Crime Stoppers encourages public involvement by providing cash rewards for anonymous information resulting in arrest, recovery of stolen property, and/or the confiscation of illegal drugs. Anonymous tips are received on the local Crime Stoppers Tips Hotline, which is 575-245-TIPS, T-I-P-S. We also now have a national tips hotline number. If you dial *8477, you will get to the national answering service, and they will redirect you to where the tip needs to go. Rattone also has a mobile app named P3 Tips. These phone numbers and websites are answered and monitored 24/7 by an answering service which specializes in crime stopper programs. Their phone system does not provide caller ID, and conversations are not recorded. The operator will ask questions to obtain all the same type of information that is requested with our secure online reporting form. If the tip is for a crime in progress or other time-sensitive matter, the answering service will request the pertinent information and then notify the Colfax County Central Dispatch Facility in Rattone so that the law enforcement personnel can be dispatched to the scene. All other tips are sent by the answering service to us via email and reviewed each morning by the volunteer responsible for passing this information along to the appropriate law enforcement agency. By guaranteeing a caller's anonymity, Rattone Crime Stoppers allows the caller to give information in a positive atmosphere without the prospect of retribution. By offering cash rewards for information leading to arrests, the recovery of stolen property, and/or the confiscation of illegal drugs, our program encourages otherwise reluctant callers to provide information. Crime Stoppers relies on volunteer directors and tax deductible contributions from the public in order to operate the administration of the program. Rattone Crime Stoppers program is funded by Raton Crime Stoppers program is funded by private donations. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization and therefore your donations are tax deductible. No tax dollars are involved. Citizens can donate to Crime Stoppers by writing a check to Raton Crime Stoppers or by going to our website at ratoncrimestoppers.org to the Donate Now button or by going to the Raton Crime Stoppers Facebook page and using the donate QR code pinned to the top of the page. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynette. And so, Crime Stoppers actually formed, what year did you say?
2016.
2016. So, it is fairly new, but it's very active and it does serve a wonderful benefit to our community. So, thank you very much for being part of our community. I wanted to ask Gro Raton, would you like to speak a little more about your organization than what you did? And if you would, I'm going to have you come up and use the mic, okay? Can you get behind?
Okay. Just to expand a little bit more on what it is that Gro Raton does. We, in the spring and in the fall, we host an entrepreneurial workshop where we train you on the basics of starting your own business or expanding it. So, we go over everything from business planning to market research to branding and marketing for your little company. And then we add one-on-one counseling and technical assistance along the way if you need it. And you don't have to go to the workshop to get the technical assistance. If you already have an existing business and you feel like you need a little help, a little tune-up, come on in. We can talk to you about that and see what's going on. We also host a spring and fall networking event. And this past spring, we held it at Moss Adventures. It was one of our best-attended networking events this year. We had people from all over the county and even from Colorado visiting us, which was great. And a lot of you got to see what the new Moss Adventures headquarters was all about. Let's see. We also, last year, we were able to provide a micro grant program for the local businesses here and we plan on doing that again this summer. Let's see. We also partner with some of our other organizations. Ambassadors, CCI, Center for Community Innovation. With CCI, we're partnering on the Lemonade Day Program, which is an entrepreneurial program for youth. If you were here last summer and got to taste the lemonade, it was a really fun event and so we are helping them organize that again this year. I think that kind of, in a nutshell, that's what we do. One last thing is, ultimately what we're doing is we are facilitating, let's see if I remember this right, the exchange of useful information between interested parties.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the information about Gro Raton. We also have our partners in sponsoring this event, Raton Main Street. Would you like to come up and talk about your organization and especially some of the events that's coming up?
Sure. Hi, I'm Christine Valentini. I'm president of Raton Main Street. We are, our mission is that we are committed members of this community dedicated to improving the quality of life in Raton, revitalizing our downtown area. We want to foster business prosperity and offer new economic opportunities. We seek to have a community. It's kind of wide-based, but I don't have it all memorized, but I mean, I feel it in my heart. We seek to have a community where all generations can have a sense of pride in Raton and all cultures feel respect for their heritage. We work on, we focus on four points in our organization. The main thing that we really want to do is work towards revitalizing our downtown area. We are a nationally and state accredited organization, which means that comes with a lot of assistance, especially from the state. New Mexico Main Street, we have a really good working relationship with them. We, of course, also have a really great working relationship with our city government, our city commission, our city manager. And together, we work towards applying for, which allows us to actually apply for a lot of granting, a lot of grants, funding from the state like through the capital outlay. I mean, in just 2021, we were able to bring in $284,600 something into Raton. We were awarded capital outlay money recently as well of $270,000 so that we can start developing and redoing our DPO areas. So, you know, that's a historical building. That's all we want to concentrate on is maintaining those especially. We also have tools in our toolbox through the state, New Mexico Main Street. We are, when we had our downtown development plan, it also included our metropolitan redevelopment plan, which means it's an MRA, and that helps. We're starting to use that tool, because that helps with city-owned buildings and being able to put them up for proposals to bring, to also, to redevelop them, bring business in and, you know, continue to grow our downtown district. It's important that we support all our downtown businesses. We are also supportive of the arts and culture. So, we are Raton Main Street Arts and Cultural District. We have members. Our Vice President is Devin Barton, City Mayor. We have our Treasurer is Serena Lannon. Our Secretary is Melissa Getch Medina. We also have Lynette as a board member. We have Linda Hedley back there as a board member. Yes, and Von Vipondo is also a board member. There are eight members, I have myself, of course. And we all support our very hard-working Executive Director Brenda Ferry, who could not be with us this evening. But she's awesome. The other things that we have coming this year, of course, we organize the International Santa Fe Trail Balloon Rally. And that balloon rally is coming up July 1 through the 3rd. And we also, in a way of promoting and marketing Raton and our surrounding communities, our Colfax County, we bring these events. They have always been premier signature events. And for two years, we had a track fire here at one time in 2011. And we, luckily, this last fire was contained quickly, because that 2011 track fire was pretty devastating. So, the balloon rally was canceled in that year. And then the following year, it just, it just didn't get organized. So, Raton Main Street took that event over in 2013. And since, we have had some very successful rallies. So, we hope that you all will be able to attend. If you're new to Raton, this, like I said, this is a premier event. And even if we get, we're hoping, at least 15 to 20 balloons, hot air balloons. It's free to the public. We do get sponsors for those balloons, those hot air balloons. So, if you're interested in sponsoring, please contact Brenda Ferry over at the Art Gallery. That's where our office is at. Or you can give me a call. Christine Valentini listed in the phone book. So, also, we have another wonderful event that's coming up. We organize and have been for the past, I believe, eight years, a signature event for the city. We were asked to help organize that like eight years ago. And it is known now as the Gate City Music Festival, which is always held over Labor Day weekend. So, we look forward to that. Mark Wills is coming to perform for us at the Schuler this year. So, lots of information and we could provide you with even more. But if you ever want to stop by the Art Gallery, which is a cool place to visit if you're new to Raton and haven't been there also, and go and talk with our Executive Director Brenda Ferry. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to mention the Raton Arts and Humanities Council, because they do have their office, as you mentioned, at the Olpass Gallery down on First Street. And they are, again, one of our sponsors for this event. So, we thank them as well as Raton Main Street. And Brenda does double duty, so she does a lot there. If you are interested in getting a balloon, that's one of the reasons and ways that we can get these balloons to come in. So, please give Brenda a call or stop in at the Raton Arts Council and ask to sponsor a balloon. Or if you have a business or something that you want to do, Gate City Music Festival, that's a fabulous thing. It's down there on First Street. We also have kind of an independent event, and that's Run to Raton. And that's going to be coming up on July...
20th, 21st and 22nd.
20th, 21st and 22nd, and it's usually held down on First Street and then around the corners there at the Old Ford Garage. Any of you who've been here for a while know where that is. But it's on Clark, 345 Clark, right?
246.
246, sorry. 246, that's right. Okay, so that's coming up in July as well. So, now, I'd still want to introduce one more member of our sponsoring group, and that's the CCI, or the Center for Community Innovation. And so, we have Patricia Duran here for that.
Thank you. I don't want to keep you all too long, because the Center for Community Innovation is a really colorful zebra organization. We do a lot. We are focused in education, workforce development and tourism. And if we have a community project that we could partner on with the city, Gro Raton, Raton Main Street or Raton Media Works, we will absolutely do it. We're all hands on board and so on deck, I guess. So, one of our big projects that we do is we do Explore Raton, which is the city's tourism and relocation brand. How many of y'all know what that is? If not, you need to get online and find out. So, what we do is we handle the branding and the spreading of information for Explore Raton. To Explore Raton, I handle the website, social media. We handle Google Grants. We also handle the entire brand. So, if the city gets a lodger's tax buy, they send it to me and say, hey, we need a billboard design in the Raton brand. So, I do all of that work and it is fun. It's extensive. We also took over the Raton Visitors Guide, so we've been putting that out for the last two years. Since I came on board in 2020, I have more than tripled the traffic online to our website and social media pages. So, this year, we anticipate about 1.5 million unique people to reach on the internet. And we're telling them how great Raton is, how great our amenities are, and also to move here. So, we're very, very excited. Like I said, we partner with a lot of organizations, businesses, to try and get the word out about how great it is. And one of the greatest things that I've been seeing over the last five years is that spirit of entrepreneurship and people moving here because they just love it here and they want to invest in the community. So, that is a really big goal of mine with Explore Raton. Another thing that we do is we do our Skill Sharp program, which is a workforce development online platform where we, if you want to sign your business up or you want to upskill your skills for your employees or for yourself, it is free. We work with WEO, we work with Help New Mexico to help get people's skills so that they can get back into the job workforce. So, we do that as well. Another big project that we came about doing was Raton Supercross. I'm excited to announce that this year, because of our hard work over the last two years with Colfax County, we put over $250,000 of volunteer work as well as business donations to upgrade the Colfax County Event Center to host Supercross events there as well as help bring in more events like the rodeos and make it safer for more athletes to do things there. So, we're excited. So, this year, we are actually getting the championship race. And that's a marker calendars. It's September 9th. And we have a whole team that puts that together. And then last but not least, we are doing Lemonade Day. Like I said, what Brandy said, we are teaching youth how to start their own business. It's free. We don't get anything out of it. The kids just get money in their pockets. So, it's a great program where we can help enforce, once again, that entrepreneurial spirit into our community. Thank you.
Thank you. So, as you can hear and see, there are lots and lots of wonderful things going on in Raton. We never have any problem with getting bored here. We have a lot of fun things going on. One of the things I do want to address is a question that was brought up to the city, and I volunteered to answer the question because I know a lot about this answer. And you've noticed that we have Gro Raton, we have the Center for Community Innovation, we have Raton Main Street, but we don't have Raton Chamber. And why is that? So, I wanted to address that, because there were many years that I was involved with the Raton Chamber. But the first thing that happened was early in 2000, we had a severe case of embezzlement and it was more than $89,000. The Raton Chamber had been very active. We were the ones who... It was actually called Raton Chamber and Economic Development Council Incorporated. And so, we did all the tourism. We did all the economic development. We did all those things. And so, therefore, we worked directly with the city and everybody else for tourism. We were, we had an office at the Visitor Center or the Tourist Information Center. For many years, the Chamber was very active. But when you have a case of embezzlement, which, by the way, is not just Raton Chamber, it's happened here in Raton many times. And that is because we all know each other. We're all friends. We trust you, right? So, that's when it happens. You trust someone and then they take advantage of that. So, anyway, that was the first kind of nail in the coffin for the Chamber, was the embezzlement. It was a major one. Then we had the Electric Light Parade, which we had put on for many years downtown with the cooperation of the city, where the streetlights were dimmed. We had floats that actually drove along the city streets from First Street up and then down Second Street. It was dark at night and all the floats were lit, like many other cities do. We had the Electric Light Parade. Unfortunately, there was a really serious accident that resulted in a death and some injuries to a family. And it was, so the city was sued, the Chamber was sued, because we were the ones who were putting on the event. Even though we may not have been responsible for those, what actually happened, we were the ones who had to pay. So, that was another thing. And then we had personalities. And I know that you've all dealt with many different personalities. And in the Chamber, because of these previous difficulties that we'd faced, it was very difficult to get strong leadership to come on board, because they didn't want to have to get sued. They didn't want to have to deal with some of the things going on in the community. And so, at that time, when the Chamber was truly struggling, there was a group of people that felt that it would be better just to say goodbye to the Chamber and start something fresh, something new, start over, basically. And so, the Chamber struggled again for a couple more years, but then it said it finally had to say goodbye. So, it was not the city who said goodbye to the Chamber or said that they couldn't be in anymore. It was the Chamber itself that had to say goodbye. So, thank you for the question. I just wanted to straighten that out. So, now, I would like to invite another sponsor, and that would be Rain, to come up and give a little information. He did receive a lot of questions. And so, he may not answer them numerically, but he is going to answer those questions in the text that he's going to offer to explain what they are doing. So, this is Paul Dinkin.
Thank you, Laura. Rain came about as the result of a community meeting that was held in December 2018 to talk about the opioid epidemic and substance abuse problems in our community. We began organizing... We began organizing as an unincorporated association the following year. And in December of 2019, we incorporated as a nonprofit. Our mission is to deal with the impact of behavioral health issues and substance abuse issues on individuals and families in our communities. We try to do this by addressing underlying issues. We're not out there just to talk at some high-level, ethereal point of view about substance abuse or behavioral health. We believe that it's in addressing the underlying issues, whether it's homelessness or poverty, problems that have passed on from generation to generation in certain families. These are all things that create the atmosphere in which we find our community facing these problems. We have come to the point where we are now seeking grants to do several things. For those of you who want to know more detailed information, we have a handout over on the table there that talks about our mission. We depend upon volunteer action teams to implement our goals. But I'll highlight a couple of things, and one specifically, because there seems to have been quite a bit of misinformation about it. First of all, we're going to be applying for the Juvenile Community Corrections Grant. Takes effect July 1. Where we'll be dealing with the mutated youth in the criminal justice system, offering them supportive services, learning new life skills where appropriate, learning employment skills. These young people, we don't want to write them off. They are part of the young people in our community that deserve a second chance. And so we're going to be involved in that. The other program that's been a source of misinformation is our attempts to develop a recovery and reentry center. Just to give you an idea of some of the thoughts that were contained in the questions that we received, people were concerned that we were bringing other communities' problems here. That could be nothing farther from the truth. We're trying to deal with the people in our community who need help. Raton doesn't have enough treatment capability for a large number of people. Well, you'd be happy to know that Crossroads has applied for and received or will be awarded, I am trusting, a grant through the Department of the Behavioral Health Services Division of the Department of Human Services, which will allow us, for the first time, to have active treatment in our detention center for people with substance abuse and behavioral health problems. We are trying, as a community, to increase our capacity to address these issues. However, with regard to the use of motels, some of you may be aware that we took a look at first the Crystal Cafe and then the Village Inn Motel. And it turned out that neither one of them really could become the recovery and reentry center that we wanted to have. We have now sought funding, what's called congressionally-directed funding, through Senator Wuhan's office in the amount of $3 million to develop a first-class recovery and reentry center to be located not in a location where it's going to be a nuisance to the neighborhood, but where we can provide services to people who are returning from jails and prisons, Ratonians who are looking to turn their lives around and give them a second chance. The North Central Mexico Economic Development District has received a $6.4 million grant to develop workforce in the seven counties that they represent. Colfax is one of them. And we will be working closely with that program. We're part of the leadership team that is developing that program. And we want to find ways, not just to help people who are returning from prison jails, but anyone who is unemployed or underemployed, to develop the skills they need to become gainfully employed and earn a livable wage. One of the concerns, I believe, is that the people in our program one comment was made that we would be bringing in bust loads of felons. So I want to assure you, we're not intending to do any such thing. In fact, our program is restricted to nonviolent felons. The participants cannot be sex offenders. They cannot be individuals with gang affiliation. And for those with substance abuse problems, they must be in recovery at the time they enter the program. Our program is designed to provide the supportive services, life skills, job skills, training, to help these people gainfully reenter the community as purposeful citizens. And that's the term that we're now using when we talk about former prisoners, jailer mates. We talk about them in terms of being returning citizens. And I would hope that the spirit of community that exists in Raton would welcome returning citizens who are dedicated to turning their lives around. Not everybody will qualify for this program. Not everyone will have the motivation. This is not a program just for people who want to find overnight housing or a meal. This is a program designed for people who have already shown by their attitudes and their actions that they want to turn their lives around. And Rain is committed to help them do that. Thank you. We're also conducting a community health needs survey. Over on the table, we have a survey. It's one pager front and back. If you want to get a chance to win a $50 gift certificate to K-Bombs, fill it out before you leave, and we will do the drawing tomorrow morning. You don't have to be present tonight, but you do have to fill it out tonight. Thank you.
I believe that that takes care of the ones who have actually worked together and sponsored this by helping to pay for the refreshments that we still have plenty of. But we still have other people that I think would like to just give you some information. And this is probably the first time, I think, that we've ever had this many organizations here together trying to work together to really better Raton. So I'm going to introduce to you Jessica, who is with the DWI program. Come on up, Jessica.
Thank you, Laura. My name is Jessica Connerlario. I'm with the Colfax County DWI Program. I am the Court Compliance Officer. My job is to help people that have been convicted of DWI, usually first through third, sometimes through fourth, get through their probation, help them find jobs, and provide other treatment services so that way they can complete their probation successfully. I do have Mr. John Mock over here, who's our new prevention specialist. He will be entering the schools as of next year, K through 12, to talk to the students about substance abuse and alcohol misuse at the early ages. And I'm trying to think of their... I'm trying to put my mouse by there. A little bit about my background. I did actually start out as a dispatcher with RPD before I transferred over to the DWI program. So I appreciate RPD with the job that they did give me and Colfax County for giving me the opportunity with this new job.
Thank you, Jessica. I would also like to introduce to you Elias Romero. Did you want to discuss Crossroads a little bit? What you've got going on?
It's good to see a crowd like this. It's good to see a community involved. We deal with a huge issue in our community. And I can remember 17-plus years ago, addressing this issue and people saying, we don't have that issue in our community, substance abuse. It's bad. We see it. We drive down the street, we see it. We go to the lake, we see it. No matter where we go, we see that there's substance abuse. And Crossroads, that's what we do. We address this issue, substance abuse and also mental health. We are the only agency in the state of New Mexico that has everything under one roof. We address everything. We just don't address the individual themselves, but we also address the families. We're into reunification to the families. Most of the people, it's like Paul said, we're bringing individuals back into our community who have paid for their crimes. And they come back into this community. They come back to a community to where they're judged. Nobody will hire them. They're addicts, they're convicts. And we take these individuals and we restructure them. By not only just addressing the issue of the substance abuse, which we attack first because it's basic. They have a problem. We go beyond that. We hit the mental health aspect of it. People, a person doesn't wake up one day and say, I'm going to shoot dope, I'm going to smoke meth, I'm going to get high, I'm going to do all these things. There's reasons why they do what they do. And that usually goes back to childhood trauma. When we face this and we look at it, there's an issue. And the issue is dealing with the whole aspects of it. So we not only just focus on just one part of it, but we focus on all of it. And we take these individuals and we place them into a structured environment that we have, which is outpatient. What we place them in, we call it IOPs, which is usually intense outpatient therapy, which is three days out of the week, which is nine hours. We make sure that they're seeing therapists, which is once a week. We also, they see another type of therapist which addresses the substance abuse, which is a layback. And then we take these individuals and we place them with what we call a CSW, which is our CCSS work. These individuals will go onto the communities now and they'll help address the issues that most people have that seem small in the eyes of other people. Most of these guys don't even have an ID. They never got an ID. They don't know how to get an ID. They don't know how to fill out an application to get a job. They don't know what a resume means. They don't know how to turn on the internet. Most of the individuals that we deal with have been doing drugs for a very long time. They have no education. They've been incarcerated for a very long time. So we sit with these individuals and we work with them every single day to teach them a whole lifestyle. We help them heal from the inside to the outside. And as we do this, and these individuals heal, then we help bring their families back. Most of them have lost their children. Most of them have lost a wife or a husband. And we help get that back in order for them. And as we do this, as we build these strong families, now they're beginning to be productive citizens. So you see now our local police departments no longer chasing them anymore. They're no longer on the police barters. They're no longer on the court dockets. Now they're working full-time jobs. And instead of robbing from the community, now they're giving back by their taxes. They're giving back by working a local job. They're giving back by shopping in our local districts. So now what we've done is we've created an individual that not only for himself, but we've also created somebody for their own community. We're a very strong and tight organization as far as the structure of what we have. It's very intense. If you look at the hours that one is put into us, it's about 32 hours, which is a part-time job. We work right alongside probation, parole. We work right alongside with the courts, district magistrate. We work any type of legal field. We work right alongside with those individuals. And I've always heard this. A lot of times, the individuals sit here and say, oh, well, they're getting a slap on the hand. No, it's not getting a slap on the hand, but what does the penitentiary do to them? They've been to the joint five, six, seven times, and they're coming out even worse. So how is that bringing rehabilitation to them? It's not. They're coming out worse, and they're bringing that worse into our communities by committing more violent crimes, by a different type of addiction. So what they've seen is that taking individuals and placing them in incarceration and taking them and placing them in the penitentiary doesn't work. What you need to do is you need to address the issue. The issue is the substance abuse, and the issue is also the mental health. Does it work? I say it works. I come from that background. I did over 20-some years in the state of New Mexico. I was an addict at a very young age. Three prison terms. 24 years later, here I am. I have multiple people from different types of counties reaching out to me. How does this work? How does your program work? It works because people wanted to work for themselves. Can we force this on them? No. Most individuals who come to us, yeah, they are court-mandated. They are referred to probation and parole. So they kind of have a sense of like they're forced to come. But when they're doing what they're doing, most of them, they make it. The question's been asked lately, what's your success rate? It's low. Why is it low? Well, the success rate for any addict may change in their life very low. It's not a high success rate. But we are making progress in our communities. We are making a difference in our communities. And not only this community, but the communities in surrounding areas around us. We deal with so much at Crossroads. It's, like I said, it's under one roof. We have everything that's there. And we are strictly here for not just the climate, but also our communities. Because as we restructure them, they help restructure us.
And I have a kind of twisted Christie's arm to come up and speak a little bit, too. So if you'll introduce yourself.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Kristi Medina, Superintendent of the Raton Public Schools. Gonna raise the Raton. Gonna raise the Raton, just like the chief. And I've been with the school system. I've been in education for 24 years. Been with the school system for 20 of those. And pretty committed to my community and my schools and the students and the families of Raton. So I've been given the privilege to come back and serve in a leadership role, and I'm very thankful for that. And as Mayor Berry said, you know, it takes some time to change that will and turn things around. And so that's what we're trying to do with the schools, is to constantly, continuously improve what we do, how we service kids, how we service parents, and make the best schools possible for our little community. One of those things, we're going to be going out for a bond in November because our facilities are... They're old. We've had them for a very long time. And they have served their purpose well. And it's time to look forward to some new schools for our students and our staff, schools that can function better for them. I appreciate that because we really need your support on this issue. I think not only will it help with economic development, it'll rejuvenate the community and just bring a lot more for our families of Raton. We work with many of these organizations sitting here, so I'm very thankful for their support in the schools. You hear some of the things they offer are young youth. And it's crucial to work with these many different organizations. It takes a village sometimes to raise our children. And I'm very thankful to partner with all of you here tonight. So please take a look at what they have to offer. They're in our schools a lot, supporting us, working with us, partnering with us. And we have lots of programs. We also, too, are working with Raton Media Works, trying to bring more education to our students so we can train them up well for our community to be able to go out and do jobs in the community. Just as the mayor spoke, you know, those jobs in the film industry, being able to offer them that education that they need, the trades that they need to be able to come out into our community and work and use those skills to provide some economic development to the community. So we have lots of new programs going on, new programs being developed. We have our graduate of a profile up here. For those of you, these are some of the skills that we want to instill in our youth so that when they come out into, whether it's our community or somebody else's community, they're productive citizens. So we encourage you to come see what we're all about, what we're trying to do and change. I just want to thank a couple of my board members that are here. We have our president, Jason Phillips. We have our president, Jason Phillips. Mr. Ted Camp here somewhere, he may have left. Kathy Honeyfield was here a few minutes ago. We have Beaver Sagata, and we also have Ryan Boone. So just want to thank you guys.
I'm gonna get on the soapbox for just a minute about the schools as well. Having been in the chamber and ambassadors and being very involved in the community, I know for a fact that when someone's looking to move to Raton, one of the first things they do is check out the schools. Because they have children and they want to know that their child is going to get a good education. And I believe firmly that we have some of the best teachers and administrators and helpers ever in our schools, and they deserve new facilities. So I'm, you know, wanting you to think about that from the bottom of your heart. It's not just we old people say, "Well, why do I want to put in a new school?" It's going to affect all of us, so thank you. Now I would like to ask Danielle to come up, if she would, and talk a little bit more about her organization. And then I also wanted to mention that we have Zia Youth here. And there, I'm gonna ask you to come up as well. And we have the Raton Humane Society here, and I'm gonna ask you to come up because you've got some important things going on. So here you go.
Thank you. Hi, good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to start by saying thank you to everybody here. I'm really excited to be here tonight. I received a message since earlier today from a U M. Oh, thank you. I didn't even notice. So I was excited today because I got an important message from a U M partner hero. And he has taken up some leadership skills very strongly and wanting to advocate for our community as strong as he can. He's from Las Vegas, New Mexico. And the message told me, "Keep an eye out for Chuck Brown and Tim Dodge from Sunrise Medical." So I just want to share, this really is a wonderful experience for us all. Community, what does that mean, community? It is not "I" in community, but it is "we" in community. And it takes each and everyone to do their job accordingly and to be engaged and to care. It takes a whole lot of heart to care about community. And I want to say thank you tonight from the bottom of my heart to all the officials that have already spoken. Thank you for what you do. We know your job is not easy and we appreciate what you do. Thank you for taking our community serious. With that being said, I wear many hats, just like most of us do. I hear, you know, Jason Phillips, School Board President, he works for the city of Raton. And there's many, many, many of us that do that in a small knit community because, you know, we care and we want to be involved and we want to try to make all the change and difference. And in doing that, you build relationships. People in a small community know who you are. They know what you produce by the relationships, by your work, and by your integrity. And so that being said, I'm here tonight to represent Youth Heartline. I get emotional when I talk about them because I've been with them now for over five years. An amazing community. They have taught me about what community means. Youth Heartline is nonprofit, dedicated to improving long-term outcomes for children and families in COFAX, TELSA, and Union Counties. Youth Heartline Child Advocacy Program. Since 1991, Youth Heartline has strived to make life safer and better for children and families in our communities. We provide services to over 500 families, and I really want to give strong credit tonight to our supervisor, Valerie Adoretti. What you see is what you get with Val. She doesn't wear any of the face. She is funny, she is caring, and she is loving, and that's what makes her a great CASA supervisor. She works with some hard cases in COFAX and Union County, and she wears her heart on her sleeve. And many times, I know she goes to bed and she does not sleep well because she cares that deep. And I just want to give special acknowledgement to you, Valerie, because what you do is not easy, and you've carried the CASA together for many, many years now, so thank you. Misty Gomez, this is my ride and die. We started Street Outreach Program here in Raton. We do give out Narcan and our Street Outreach bakes to homeless. We serve COFAX and Union Counties. We served a total of 155 homeless people in one year. I love working with Rain with all of the data and statistics and trying to improve those grants. This is a serious, serious thing going on in our community. If they're not homeless because of economic situations, a lot of the homeless is using drugs, and they are homeless because all of their family has tried, or maybe some of them have tried. They have tried all the services that are available to them. And unfortunately, it is a reality in our community, so thank you to our mental health, behavioral health agencies that can provide one-on-one case management, which is very well needed within our community. We do have a drug epidemic, and it is real. And so Misty has now been promoted to a Family Navigator, to work with families and anyone in need of any kind of assistance, from utility assistance to house vouching assistance. And then Jada Cordero and I, we work Street Outreach with homeless. And Jada is new to the team, she's a lot of fun, gives a lot of great energy, keeps me laughing, but she is brilliant on the computer. We have to give it over to our younger population. They know skill set us older ones do not know. So thank you, Jada, for your talent. She creates some amazing flyers, brochures. Anytime I need help on that computer, she's always there. And then we also have Jolene Archuleta. She works with youth family housing, and the youth housing is for ages sixteen to twenty-four. If you know any youth that are homeless, and they are not, they can't be any severe criminal or have a strong criminal background, because we don't have the mental health, behavioral health to be able to provide that kind of support level to them. But we do have a case manager, and she'll work with them one-on-one, and she helps them to get into education, to get into a job, whatever they may need. So that is Jolene Archuleta, and any youth or any family member can apply through dreamtreeproject.org. Thank you all.
Do we have someone here from Growing Great Kids? Lenore, did I see Lenore here? Did she go? Okay. That was another really good program that we have here in Raton is Growing Great Kids. So we'll get her on earlier next time. This, by the way, is going to be an annual event, as I mentioned before. I would like Barb to come up for just a moment and talk about the Raton Humane Society. It's been a vital organization to Raton for many, many years. Barb is kind of the spearhead of the Raton Humane Society, so here you go.
I wasn't expecting to come up here tonight. The Raton Humane Society was organized and became a nonprofit organization in 1979. We built the present shelter in 1981, and it opened in 1982. And since that time, we have added many buildings, kennels, and we've done a lot of improvement, but we have a long ways to go. We have a good staff, thanks to John, thanks to Jimmy for backing us, thanks to Scott and the city. They've all been very supportive in everything we do. We work off of donations and grants and membership dues, but we need a lot more members. We do have good volunteers. One of the biggest programs that we work with is the Colorado Prison Companion Canine Program. And we send many of our animals to this program. They are worked through the different prisons in Colorado and trained, they go through an eight-week training program, and then they're put up for adoption. And we've had several Raton citizens that have adopted. I think they're highly impressed with this program as well. But it is our largest and very successful program. But we welcome all of you to come out to the shelter and visit. We do have now a no-kill shelter. So when we first started, animals that were brought in were held just three days and then euthanized. We don't do that anymore. So unless the animal is very sick or vicious, then of course they would be euthanized. But we try to adopt out all that we can and hang on to those that are very slow being adopted. But we're very proud of our record and we thank all of you. Any donations are very well received. If you donate to, I read this in the USA Today, one of the largest humane society organizations in the United States, they receive hundreds of thousands of dollars, and that money is given to the administration. Very little money goes to the animals. All of our donations go to the animals, so the truth of all of it. Anyway, thanks to all of you, we appreciate your support, and we'll continue as long as we can.
Thank you very much, Barb. We appreciate the Raton Humane Society and all that you're doing here. We have a couple of tables that have not come up to speak. Did you want to come up and give a little more information about your organization? Okay, so here's Beverly. And I appreciate all of your patience, but we have some really good organizations here, and I'd like for you to be able to hear from all of them. Well, they're not all here tonight, but maybe next year.
I don't know if Ira wants to come up here and help me with this because he's part of the ALCS, and he's, the ALCS really know what they're doing when it comes to the flag retirement ceremony. And I would like to thank the city for allowing us to do it. It has been on the auxiliary's, the VFW auxiliary's heart, that we have all these flags that are tattered and stuff that haven't gotten disposed properly. And so we decided we wanted to do it, but we didn't know how. We didn't want to do it the wrong way. So we did invite the ALCS Club to come and help us do it, and we've had meetings with the ALCS, and they are helping us with the proper way of doing everything. With the VFW, we have Gilbert San Roman, he's gonna be our emcee for the VFW part, and Ira is gonna be emcee for the ALCS. And we're gonna have several, I don't know how to say it, the police officers, the fire department, and different service organizations there. Where it's gonna be at is gonna be at the Aquatic Center. They're gonna set up right where the fire department usually does the fireworks at. And JR's gonna have electricity out there for me to run the music, because we're gonna have, we'll have music going on during the ceremony. And we also have drop-off boxes. We have one here, but we have them at the VFW, the ALCS, Super Save, the Raton Fire Department, Pinwheel, Northern Regional Housing Authority, the Raton Regional Aquatic Center, Dollar Store, Dollar Tree. And if you have any flags that you want to give to us so that we can retire them properly, we'd appreciate it. This is gonna be on June the fourteenth, which is on Flag Day, at six o'clock. We also are gonna have, give out 500 hot dogs. And so also, we would like you to bring your own chair or whatever, because we're not gonna have, you know, so you don't have to just stand there and wait, just bring a lawn chair with you or whatever. But I'd appreciate everybody that can go and come down and see this, because I've never seen it done before, and I think it would be something that would be honorable for our flag. Thank you.
Just a little note here, because I have been in Raton for a few years. We do really appreciate the VFW stepping up to do the flag ceremony. Previously, we had a gentleman here in town who was a lifetime scout. His name was Dennis Downey, and he always did the retirement of the flags with the scouts here in town. So he has since passed away, and we miss him dearly because he was very involved in the community as well. So thank you, VFW, for picking up retiring the flags. It's a very important ceremony. Also, don't you guys do the flags at the courthouse and at the tourist information center? And you always need volunteers, so Flag Day, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Veterans Day, do you do that too? They put the flags out on tourist information corner there and at the county courthouse. So they're always looking for volunteers to help put the flags up and take them down. So contact the VFW if you'd be interested in helping when they announce it on the radio that they're gonna be doing that. Okay, was there anyone else that didn't get to speak? I noticed that Jeff left because he didn't want to have to get up here and talk. If anybody else has an organization that they would like to introduce? Oh, thank you. I saw him sitting here. So I want to invite Cy Trujillo to come up because he is one of our county commissioners, and I was hoping that we would have Monte here, but Cy is a commissioner, and we're very thrilled to have him here. So Cy, if you would just kind of give us a little introduction of the county.
Hello, my name is Cy Trujillo. I'm the Commissioner for District One, so which is pretty much half of Raton here. Wanted to come out, we have our commission meetings every second, fourth, Tuesday of each month. I encourage you to make it if you can, it's at nine AM. I know it's a little difficult at times, and we also posted it on YouTube, so please check it out if you can. The county is, the county's doing good overall. We're working to clean up, get caught up, I guess you could say, get caught up and move forward, and we're doing really well. We're seeking federal money, federal appropriations, kind of like what Rain had mentioned. Working different, a lot of different angles. The county's very busy, we got, you know, we have the Moreno Valley, we got the airport up there. Yes, we got three commissioners, Mary Lou Kern, she's District Two, which is the other half of Raton going down to Springer and Simarone. Then you got Commissioner Weir, he is up in the Moreno Valley, Simarone also as well. If you guys ever have any questions, sorry, you're always welcome to reach out to me. My county cell phone's up on the webpage. If you see me, feel free to just ask me questions. I'm more than happy to answer anything you have, or if you have any issues with the county, I'd be more than happy to help you in any way. Thank you.
Okay, you know me, and I always have something to add. So I'm gonna add a little plug here for the county and the city, really. All those new businesses that we're trying to encourage to open up here or start, I wanted to mention that the city depends on grocery receipts taxes for a lot of their income and services. So when we get those roads paved and we get some of the other services, and we have a police department and a dog shelter and things like that, a lot of that is our grocery receipts taxes. And so I just wanted to mention that all those new businesses, all of those businesses that are maybe coming into town, that's going to help our bottom line on the city. And so we want to encourage new businesses to remember to get a city registration, get a city license, it's required to do business in town, and then happily pay your grocery receipts taxes because it comes back to us. And that's why, that's how they really do provide some of the services. Same thing for the county, not grocery receipts taxes, but property taxes. So when you're a business, you do need to pay property taxes if you own the building, even the contents inside the building. I have a business and I gladly pay my property taxes because I know that we have services because of those taxes. This is America, and that's how we run. So anyway, I just wanted to make a little plug for the city and the county on taxes. I know it's not a fun subject, but it's one of those necessary things. A reminder, please, help yourself to some of the refreshments because we have a lot there. If you want to take some home, take it home with you, because I don't want to take it home. Also, we have a lot of tables here with a lot of information, so please visit some of these. If you have more questions that you didn't get a chance to ask, talk to some of them here. One other item I wanted to mention is the Raton Ambassadors is sponsoring a ratoncalendar.com. We know that every organization has their own calendar, their own events listed on their website, but we know that newcomers to town don't know how to find all the information. So we're gonna put it all in one place, ratoncalendar.com. And so we will be collecting information from all of the organizations and putting it on there, all of the school information and putting it on there. We have some volunteers that are going to be canvassing and asking for information about any event and activity, Little League, whatever it may be. We want it on that calendar. We want it on that calendar so it's in one place, and that's all you have to do is go to one place and find out what's going on in Raton. We also provide links to all of the organizations, to the city, to the county, on that website. So ratoncalendar.com, one place has it all. Thank you.